Dear Lord, forgive us for our sins. Thank you, dear God, for your love, your mercy, and your grace. Give us salvation, Lord. Father, and I just thank you for each and every one here in this room. I just ask a special blessing upon them. Dear God, Lord, I just ask you to be with them. Our law enforcement, our firefighters, clear load, and first responders, just watch over and keep everybody safe, dear Lord. Those, dear God, that are in need of help issues, dear Lord, as part of your God, you just give them the most wanted help, forbid thy will. Lord, be with us as we go through this meeting. Dear God, help us conduct business in a godly manner and be pleasing unto you, Lord. I just ask you to forgive us for our many sins and for asking these things in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Mr. Steve Cogburn, if you can talk to us.
Y'all got me number one on the list?
You are number one, Dave.
Yeah, well.
You want to be number two.
Well, I got the privilege to serve as a fire coordinator since 2008, sometime mid-summer, whatever. But it's come time for me to give that up. I've done it long enough, and I've got some related health issues going down the road. So I'm gonna go ahead and resign my position there, which will be effective December 31st at 5:00 PM. So let y'all know in a little bit ahead of time, but I'm gonna have to take some more treatments coming up in the next year. And, you know, I don't know what that's gonna bring, but I've had a good time doing it. We've accomplished a lot, and we've promoted the fire service in this county big time since, you know, we got started. You know, your board, previous boards, you know, spent a lot of money on buying equipment to get these rates down, and that's where we kept them. So I do appreciate it, but it's time for me to move on. So thank y'all very much.
We appreciate it. Good job. I like it. You got a motion, Dave, to say you're looking at motion, second, Mary Ann Allen, please. We got a public hearing for closing portion of County Road 260.
Anybody here for a public hearing on County Road 260? So y'all know, the petition was filed, submitted to the board, and closed a section of 260, and it's set for public hearing today to hear comments. Have emotions?
I wanna, this is in the fifth district hearing. I'd like to take this under advisement for the time being. Let me do a little bit more follow-up on it.
All right.
So I'll make a motion. I'll take a motion, make a motion to take it under advisement.
All right. We got a motion, but Steve, take this under advisement on a later date, I guess. And second, my friend, all in favor? Motion. Okay, we need to discuss the signage quotes for the industrial park. Gary Chandler, you can tell us about it.
Yeah, I sure will. We have two quotes in front of you. And just to recap, some of you guys might not be familiar in the audience. You know, we've been real fortunate to receive a fair amount of grant money to work to develop Martin Town, what we call Martin Town North Industrial Park, which is the area across Highway 30, just north of the Walmart distribution center. TBA has been, and others, but TBA has been intimately involved with us from the beginning on this. And, you know, when we began to put together a plan of exactly how to, you know, properly develop that part, to increase the marketability of it, the road, of course, which is under construction now, and hopefully soon to about to be completed, was the big-ticket item. But one thing that TBA was adamant that we include in this project was industrial park signage at Mississippi. And we have garnered two quotes, one of which is from Mid-South Signs totaling $42,113.60 plus tax, which is gonna end up being $45,061. And then the second quote is $75,250 from Mitchell Signs. We incorporate, or enlisted Larry Britt's help earlier last week to make sure that this was apples-to-apples in terms of footings at the base of the sign, because the sign's very tall. And Larry went back to both contractors and ensured that, you know, the proper structural engineering at the base was being conducted and quoted at the appropriate level for both quotes. And this is what we came back with from both signed companies. Now, I will say that there are a couple more things involved in this, one of which is Northeast Power is the power company that's gonna serve, that serves Martin Town North. I've had a conversation with them last week, and they tell me that their fees and items are gonna be no more than $1,000, all right? The other piece of this is to have a local contractor come out and to lay the appropriate conduit under ground from the sign to northeast closest pole, which is gonna be in between 100 and 150 feet. Now, Chad has helped me this morning, and we talked to Skipper Allen and some others. Skipper told me on the phone just a minute ago that he's padded it some because there are some unknowns in terms of the intricacies of how the sign is gonna be wired and whatnot, but that he would put in there about $37,000, I'm sorry, $3,740. So the total of those items on the, for the low quote is $49,801, based on what we know today. Now, that includes the low quote from Mid-South Signs, plus the tax, which is $45,061.55, no more than $1,000, I'm told from Northeast Power. And then the electrical contractor who will run the appropriate conduit from the sign to northeast closest pole, $3,740, total of $49,801. So that is, you know, approximate best of our knowledge what we can do today based on some unknowns, the electrical contractor. Northeast may indeed be a little lower than $1,000. So based on what we've got today, I'd like for the board, if you're inclined to, to consider these quotes. And hopefully, we can get this effort moving forward.
We're supposed to be taxing, now, is that on the tax on the sign, or is that?
Now, that should be on the sign, so.
We should be.
That's an item that would lessen that burden some and provide, in fact, provide some cushion. Yeah, good.
You got a motion to approve, second? To approve Mid-South?
Right.
Low bid? All right. We got a motion by Randy to approve the lowest bidder. Second, my Dave, all in favor? Motion care. Thank you. Need to amend the veteran service budget, increasing contractual services of $600 and decreasing working cash $600.
That's okay.
We can do.
No, I can see ya, I'm just crazy to reckon.
I believe in you.
I believe in you.
He's just a little far out.
Okay, first, we need to discuss and consider quotes for an air hammer unit at Fort Hightide. We probably didn't want to skip that, did you?
We have two we've seen from Conditioned Air and two below for $12,366.15, $12,366.15. From TriStar Companies in Batesville, it is $12,900, $12,900 even. If y'all wanna look at these to compare them, they, from what I've glanced over, it looks as a countywide space program.
And they both have a one-year warranty.
The only thing I don't see on Conditioned Air is that TriStar put remove ceiling to demo and handle unit and reinstall ceiling grid and secure.
They're both supposed to do that.
And I don't see. Here's reinstall acoustic ceiling.
Okay.
It doesn't look like they listed demo. I mean, otherwise, they appear to be similar. I think you didn't know the sort of common sense. You can't do the work unless you, unless you demos off.
So you won't, you know, take the low speed? You okay with the wording, Councilor? I think so. Make a motion, we take the low speed. You got a motion, Dave? Conditioned Air. Second, my Steve, all in favor?
I'd like to see the one, Conditioned Air.
Need to amend the veteran service budget, increasing contractual services of $600 and decreasing working cash $600. Motion. Just to upgrade EVM system, let's say, veterans information system. Motion to Steve, second, my Dave, all in favor? Motion care. Need to amend the budget for dairy farm for purchase of dairy vehicle by increasing capital outlay for $35,000 and decreasing working cash for $35,000. Need a motion to approve. So what, motion by Randy?
Second.
Second, my Dave, all in favor? Motion care. Need to amend general fund budget for security bond payments. Purchase department, increase contractual services of $1,400, and the receiving department contractual services for $1,800. Decrease working cash for $3,200.
We're able to get all the surety bonds done at once, so that's, that feels better.
Right. Right. Need a motion to approve? Motion, David? Second, my Steve, all in favor? Motion care. Approve a pay increase for two empty corners. Yes, a mandated raise is $300 a month. Need to amend the budget for salaries to increase personal services by $3,876 and decrease working cash to $3,876. So what? Second, motion to Steve, second, my Randy, all in favor? Motion care. We need to discuss the reverse auction bid received from, reverse auction on December 4th. I made y'all copy those bids.
Looking at that thing.
Of the coal mix.
In the backup.
Coal Mix Incorporated's the only one that bid on that. Bid three different line items. One is liquid emulsion, one is coal mix on site, and one is coal mix loaded into plant. The liquid emulsion is $3.10, and coal mix mixed on site's $3.95. If you flip over, it's the coal mix loaded into plant, $8.40. That's what they do all the assorted, all the processes. They probably know I'm gonna bid on that one. Yeah, they're the only ones that bid on that. So when they do them separate, or we do all this together? I would probably do them separate. I'd probably do that. Then I'll do liquid asphalt. You maybe wanna take the alternate on the liquid asphalt.
That's up a tad from last year, that there.
I believe it was up 10 cents.
10 cents.
And that's from? From what you buy the most of. Coal mix. So we need a motion to accept that bid?
I made a motion, please, sir.
All right. Motion by Dave, all in favor? Second, my Randy, all in favor? Motion care. Okay, we also probably wanna take the alternate on the rock, too, don't we? Yeah, you probably, I would think so. And Hunt Profiting Company was the lowest on the liquid asphalt. The CRS2, they were $1.69, Ergon was $1.74. And on the CRS2P, I think that's probably, Hunt was $1.95, Ergon was $2.80. That's a gallon. So we need a motion to take the low, take the low speed, and Ergon is alternate. Accept Ergon's offer. Got a motion by Randy, second, my Steve, all in favor? Motion care.
Show us the transaction, please.
You ready to go to limestone? Yes, sir. On the limestone, we had two bids, Blue Water, which used to be Hoover, and Vulcan. And they're both up on around the Alabama line up there, competitioning, and, well, Vulcan's on over them, helping. And after you consider, I think, three of them, three of those products, size of seven, 89, Crusher Ron, Vulcan was a little bit cheaper, but time you consider the Holland rate, 17 mile difference, at $16 a mile, which is what we pay commercial rate, they have $2.70 to Vulcan's. If you do that, Blue Water is the lowest bidder of all of them. It would bid number one, number four, number six, number seven, Crusher Ron, number 56, and number 89. Is Blue Water cheaper on Holland? Blue Water is cheaper on Holland when you consider transportation jobs. So we need to take them as lowest bid, and Vulcan is alternate? Right. Similar. Motion by Dave. Second, my Randy, all in favor? Motion care. What else we got, Ted? That's all we got. We took the alternate on for Vulcan. We didn't get no asphalt, I mean, no. Hot meat? Hot meat. Y'all did that. You've been doing that on the job, you know, for the job, for the project. Cause you the, you the contract for that old company that put it out. All right. You ready to listen to that? We need to approve to advertise for five sling lack of dump trucks. Through reverse auction, right? Is that what we do? So what, Randy?
Second.
Second, my Evan, all in favor? Motion care. Doug is supposed to get with Scotty this afternoon. Doug? I mean, yeah, Doug Wiggins, we're at Third River. He's gonna help us with the specification. On the dump truck? Yeah, cause he's familiar with that. With the doing of garbage truck? No, I guess. Need to approve budget report for November 2019.
Take a motion to approve.
You gonna look over it, Derek?
Yeah.
Motion by Dave?
Sir.
Second, my Steve, all in favor? Motion care. Need to approve one school bus turnaround for beyond the city school.
You guys don't want to know.
It's on County Route 371, Lake Grove, Bobby Roberts, G. W., G. D. So just renew this one. He's with us, second.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second, my Evan, all in favor? Motion care. Need to approve one medical examiner fee.
So what? Who's that?
Billy Zane Winco. Morgan did this one, so that's why y'all didn't receive it, probably.
Right, okay. Motion by Randy?
Sir.
Second, my Evan, all in favor? Motion care. Approve a payment to Chancery Clerk for services as county treasurer. What y'all think?
I think you go ahead.
We could take it under advisement.
You got here, you make a motion, Randy?
He did.
Motion, Randy?
There's his name. It's his favorite.
Second, my Steve, all in favor? Approve inventory deletion of scanner from Chancery Clerk's office.
What?
Motion by Dave?
Right.
Second, my Evan, all in favor? Motion care.
You ready? Oops, I am.
Need approval of reimbursement of $677 for the Justice Court order.
I got that, what? Marissa has sent up here, this is where, she prepared a letter to say, if I may read it. Dear Board of Supervisors, on February 2, 2015, Mr. Nestet pled, I'm sorry, pled, this is on, shield, Jermaine Nestet. Mr. Nestet pled no loan to DUI first offense and paid fine of $677. In March of 2015, he appealed to the DUI first to Circuit Court, where it sat on appeal in 2018. In April 2018, the DUI first was dismissed in Circuit Court. Therefore, Mr. Nestet has requested refunded the amount he paid to Justice Court for his fine of $677. She has enclosed receipt of where the amount was paid, a letter from Mr. Nestet, and a copy of the order dismissed, signed by the Circuit Court judge.
You representing him, Chad?
So he paid it, and it's just, it's already been settled.
And Joe said give it back to him.
It's already been settled to the county, and the judge has asked for it. Yes, he said it was appealed from Justice 2 Circuit, and now he's asking it for it to be dismissed.
That's the procedure. You pay it, and then it gets dismissed, and you're entitled to get your money back.
Motion to approve? Motion, Randy?
Sir.
Second, my Evan, all in favor? Motion care. Need to approve inventory deletion on the printer from Circuit Clerk's office.
So what?
Motion. Dave, second, my Evan, all in favor?
Thank you.
Motion care. Need approval of election commissioners and payment of Regis Star. Motion by Evan?
Sir.
Second, my Steve, all in favor?
Oh, maybe so.
Regis Star. You ready? If somebody else want some, approval of reimbursement for outstanding check for $16.00 from the Circuit Court.
Now, let me ask, we have another one? We had, we had one, and then Phil's just found out that she has another one that needs to be made, and these were, you explain, please.
What happens, these are restitution checks that go out. And usually, on the check, they say void after 60 days. So, I mean, I don't care if you approve it or not, to be honest. Some reason or another, Mr. John Ellis, his was from, I don't have my paperwork on it. What date is his? Is his four or five years old? Supposedly, he found it in a drawer, and it had never been cashed, and.
It was dated 6/10/15.
And he found that check in a drawer, and he wants his $16.50 now. We settle it to the county because we have numerous outstanding checks. We wait like a year and a half. This other one, Tony Brooks, he came, he said his was in a magazine. He got ready to take, his is only from 2018.
18.
His was in magazines, and when he got ready to take magazines to Goodwill, he was going through them, and it fell out. And he realized it had never been cashed, nothing done. They bring me the original checks back, they have not been cashed.
How much was it for?
His was $60. So I've settled the money to the county, I can't just rewrite a check without getting approval from y'all.
He's got a half program.
Motion to approve?
Sir.
Motion by Randy, second, my Evan, all in favor? Motion care. He didn't give the $75 off.
I'm going.
All right. You ready? All right. Well, you have to submit some addresses for the new voting precincts.
But we voted on 12/2/2019 to be placed on the minutes. There's not a vote necessary.
And now, I was informed that we have two more?
I got two, second.
So we need to vote on that to approve the two, you vote in three seats, and if you'll tell us where it is, you don't have to give us the address.
Okay, I got the addresses.
Okay.
We're moving West Union School to Greg Conley Building, used to be where Marsh Feeding Mill was for years. It's gonna be away from the school, and there won't be no traffic, it won't be a hazard. And any of the school, we're gonna move it to Ammar Baptist Church. They voted, I reckon, 100% last night to have it moved there. Me and Bill have both looked, and I don't think there's a thing that we have to do except advertise and go vote there. Put some signs up showing that we're moving it. Anyway, I reckon we're good to go, and I got the addresses.
Okay.
I can text them to you. I'll give them to the paper now, don't worry.
Yeah, about a year and a half ago, Dixon Consulting Firm, Dixon Safety Consulting LLC came in. We were voting on Election Day, and they encouraged us at that point for us to get out of all the schools. You know, it's not really the schools, it's not the Board of Supervisors, it's this consulting firm that made this recommendation. So as of all these changes, we will now be out of all the schools.
This is it, this is Lord's order. Yeah, the schools have kind of, you know, asked about it also.
It's for safety reasons.
It's safety reasons, that's right.
Just you've got strangers coming in at all your schools, each and every day, on Election Day, all day. Other schools do have voting precincts. So as of all these changes, we will now be out of all the schools.
Well, this is it. This is where it's going. Yeah, the schools have kind of, you know, asked about it also.
It's for safety reasons.
It's safety reasons, that's right.
Just you've got strangers coming in at all your schools, each and every day, on Election Day, all day. Uh, other schools do have voting precincts within their schools, but most times, they do not have students, they take staff development days. So this will avoid that.
Okay. Take a motion to approve. Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Evan, all in favor? Motion here. We need to approve employment changes at the Sheriff's Department for Chris Sowards from corporal to sergeant, effective December twenty-sixth. December sixteenth, that's it. Alright, we need a motion. Motion by Evan.
Second.
Second by Dave, all in favor? Motion here. Now, I gotta get this part. Now, we need to, uh, approve employment change at Sheriff's Department for Adam Fitz from sergeant to lieutenant, effective December sixteenth. I need a motion.
Motion, motion.
Motion by Evan, second by Steve, all in favor? Motion here. Before you say it, you gotta correct it.
Before you say it.
That's right. Well, we had them together, but we, we went to a class this week, last week, and we told they need to be separated, stuff like that.
Just on this, like, there's... On something, can't divide, these need to be separated.
Yeah, some things you can't provide with any, that's why.
Right, which I...
We need to approve the employment change for, uh, Jeremy McCarty from lieutenant to investigator, effective January second, two thousand twenty-one. Motion by Evan.
Second.
Second by Dave, all in favor? Motion here.
Getting known. We need to be in the know, though.
Alright, I, it don't matter, does it? To the, that's right, that's right. Okay. Alright, we need to approve the employment change at Sheriff's Department for Barry Baker from corporal to sergeant. And it's effective January second, two thousand twenty-one. Motion by Randy, second by Steve, all in favor? Motion here.
You think you're in the, in the Lakers?
We, uh...
Looking more?
I don't know if Jimmy Dale's gonna be able to come out of the town.
Now, I might want to take his mission on his back.
Marty might want to transfer. Need approval of employment change at Barry Baker from investigator to chief deputy and jail administrator, effective January second, two thousand twenty-one. Way out there. I don't know.
What y'all, we're waiting, we're gonna talk about it, though.
Motion by Randy. Second by Evan, all in favor? Motion here. I think you do a good job.
We will be missing our...
Yeah.
Our Johnny Baker.
Sure. Okay. We need to...
That's good, that is good.
We need, um, approval of inventory, inventory deletion of, of a Glock forty-five in the Sheriff's Department. Approval of giving it to Johnny Baker as a retirement.
Yep. A motion.
Motion by Steve, second. Second by Dave, motion here.
Surprise.
December thirty, it'd be Johnny's last day, we had an eight...
Retirement.
Two to four retirement deal at the Justice Court, the twentieth Friday of this week, for Johnny. And his many years of service in Union County as chief deputy and, uh, deputy and investigator, and district attorney's office investigator.
How many years, J.B.?
None anymore. Stand up and tell them.
Thirty-four or so, I can't hold it over.
Thirty-four years. And the last eight has been the roughest trying to keep the sheriff straight.
No, it's been good. I'm a hundred percent for the sheriff, I mean, I've been on each person here, you know? Uh, we've done some good in the last eight years, and I'm sure Barry can keep it up and keep everything running in there. It's a hard job.
Yeah.
It's a hard job, you know? And I told Barry, I thought, you know, tell you what, I told him, get him a brand new notebook, what was the first thing I said, put him on top of it, Barry?
Twenty-four seven, three sixty pounds.
You know, put you on call, you know, all the time, but it's good, it, it really is good. And the people have been good, made the award been good to him.
That's right.
So, I'm telling him pretty good health, so.
Thank you for your service.
We appreciate it.
Alright, we got approval of a pay increase for one new court personnel.
This is one that had already been budgeted for, but we just didn't have an employment sheet on there, so... Does that make sense? There's one person, they're getting, uh, gonna increase one hundred dollars per month because they've taken on additional responsibilities. And we just did not fill out the proper form, but it was budgeted, it was already in the budget. We just had...
We have to approve.
I paid it, so.
Okay.
But so, it, but the county can start paying it now. It's okay.
Motion by Randy, second by Steve, all in favor? Motion here. You want me to say next thing?
Uh, you did this morning, you signed it, thank you, we got it, thank you.
Y'all got anything else you wanna add?
Card for next week?
Thank you.
Did you ever talk Scotty? It's gonna stay the same, hey?
He never did call me back, I would think it'd stay the same.
Hold on just a minute, really, I'm not trying to find out.
They're off Wednesday, anyway.
I think it's gonna stay the same. Hey, is the garlic gonna stay the same next week? It's not gonna change. Alright, thank, thank you. Thanks, sir. It's gonna stay the same. Okay.
I do, I didn't have my stuff submitted before five o'clock, four o'clock on Thursday. It's just, it's just so hard in my office these days.
I don't figure nothing's going on, already.
It's what you get for sending out all those Christmas cards.
Yeah, some Christmas cards look better.
Yeah. He got me alright. Alright, first thing is, I have to have spread upon the minutes that we do, um, partial payments for land taxes only. You take half, um, taxes are due before February first, a fourth, plus the penalties are due by May first, another fourth, taxes and penalties are due by July first. So I have to have that spread upon minutes that we do partial payments. Um...
Can we, do we, do we, do we need to advertise that?
You're probably not required to.
You're not required to, I just have to have it spread upon minutes of board.
We've been doing it before?
We've been doing it.
So if I say...
But because...
Something that you wanna do.
It's my, mine for the next four years, I feel like my name needs to be, that it was approved by the board, that our office is doing that, that it's on the minutes. It is a statute, it is the law, and I just feel like we're supposed to do it if it's in the board that way.
And that's just unrealty.
So in other words, I could kind of pay my taxes, and then if I won't start paying on two thousand twenty? Is that what you're talking about?
Only your nineteenth, so your bill is...
The one's a dead tax.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
That's the big bill you leave it this time.
I mean, uh, alright.
Yeah. But yeah, if you wanna do it in partial payments and do those penalties that go with it, sure, but I'll take care of mine all.
I'm gonna take care of mine.
But I don't wanna pay extra.
I'm gonna borrow it from you.
I don't wanna pay extra.
Okay. How many motions? Motion by Randy. Second by Evan, all in favor? Motion here. Alright, what?
Alright, second thing is, we have, um, Mississippi chapter of the International Association of Assessors, and it's just a ten dollar due for each assessor in the office. And, um, just wanna have them up today, it helps us with recertification, we don't have to pay as much.
Need a motion to approve.
Someone?
Motion by Dave, second by Steve, all in favor? Motion here.
And the last thing is that surrender tag list that we have every month, and that's it, it was three easy ones.
We need a motion to approve tag list. Motion by Randy. Circuit, second by Steve, all in favor? Motion here. Jimmy, you're... Jason, got anything y'all want to tell? Sam, you okay?
I was gonna tell y'all we're gonna be delivering the Christmas boxes on Friday.
Friday? Okay. That's right. Say, yeah, I didn't fancy it.
You didn't know it.
Put your hat on, I'm saying.
You didn't know it in front of us, I didn't.
We need to adjourn to Monday, January the sixth, two thousand twenty-one. That's whatever, what do we say? What do we need to do with that? I mean, I'm gonna step down.
You're gonna resign.
I'm stepping down. I ain't resigning.
I'm safe and thorough.
Yeah. I'm gonna pass the torch, whatever you wanna call it.
We can charter on that.
I don't know.
Do it on the sixth, or do it now, or...
I think you could do it now.
You just make it a second, it's a sixth. There you go. Where are you gonna?
January sixth.
I guess, I don't know, I guess we need to sign that, though.
Effective January, it says effective January sixth.
So you mean past twenty-twenty.
Yeah, so you got a new board number on January sixth.
I mean, you could vote on January the sixth.
And then do it all right there?
On who, well, I'm just saying, you could resign, you could step down now, affect January the sixth, and on the sixth, you could vote to approve the little board president.
That sounds good.
That's what you need to do.
Okay, let's do that.
What if something happened between them?
He's still...
It ain't effective to December. I mean, January.
So is there a motion to approve his resignation?
Make a motion.
And you can't vote, you can't make the vote, no, I guess you can, but you can't.
I'm gonna give you, we're gonna give a motion. I make the motion. Motion by Ted, second by Dave, all in favor? Motion here. I think legally you can.
We're trying to leave you.
I'm gonna sit over like y'all, I'm gonna sit over like y'all. I love my job, but I'm reading the beat on, right?
Yeah, you're making love to leaving, buddy.
Huh?
I'll make the motion, you stay, and you sit, you touch it.
Yeah, but I can't hear you, you know, too fast. Okay, so we got that, take care. Alright, so we need a motion to adjourn to Monday, November the sixth. Motion by Randy. Second by Evan, all in favor? Motion here. Everybody have a Merry Christmas?
Merry Christmas.
About to have a...
Oh, wow, now you did.